Good afternoon, everyone. We're opening our 2:00 PM joint agenda for Committee on Water and Land and the Committee on Higher Education. It's January 31st. We're at the State Capitol in Room 309. I'm Lahaina Poypoy, Vice Chair, and to my left is Chair of Waterland Representative Linda Ichiyama. And also thank you to Chair Peruso and Vice Chair Capella of Higher Education Committee for allowing us to have this joint hearing today. If you're testifying in person or on Zoom, please try to limit your testimony to a few minutes, at which time we may ask you to summarize just to ensure we have enough time for questions and answers. If you're on Zoom, please turn off your camera and microphones until it's your time to testify. And to stay in compliance with YouTube, please don't use copyrighted images as a virtual background. Chat function on Zoom should only be used for technical assistance. Okay, let's get started. We'll start with HB 1844 relating to the University of Hawaii. We have Kar Dennis Pinter on Zoom. Okay, not present. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none. No one to ask questions of, so we'll move on to HB 1924 relating to wildfire forecast system for Hawaii. First, we have Attorney General's Office on Zoom. Oh, in person, okay, even better.
Deputy Attorney General Candice Park, on behalf of the Department of Attorney General, we just recommend that in accordance with Article 6, Article 10, Section 6 of the Constitution that the bill be amended to include the matter of statewide concern language. Thank you.
Thank you. University of Hawaii.
Chair, President Marioka, we stand on our testimony.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up to testify. Would anybody else like to testify? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to... Oh, members, any questions? Oh, Chair.
Thank you. For the University of Hawaii. Thank you, Dean Marioka, for being here.
Thank you, Chair.
If you have an estimate of how much would be needed for an appropriation for this work?
So right now, our estimate for this one forecast is about $1 million in the request, very similar to the associated other House bill, 1949.
Okay, I was gonna ask you the same question on the next one. So you anticipated my ask, $1 million for both?
Yes.
$1 million each?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to HB 1949 relating to the generation of wildfire susceptibility maps for Hawaii.
Chairs, members of the committees, same request regarding Article 10, Section 6. Thank you.
Thank you. University of Hawaii. Thank you. Okay, that's all we have signed up to testify. Members, any questions? Oh, yes, anyone else wishing to testify? Okay. Seeing none, members, any questions?
Question for the university?
University?
Yeah. Just about how these two different initiatives connect with each other?
Sure.
Is one dependent on the other? Like, do we need the maps to do the forecast or something like that?
No, they can stand alone separately, but they would work better if both models were able to talk to each other. One is a forecast for like an advanced warning system, and the other one is more of a risk assessment for decision makers in land use planning and way to look at how they can deploy resources in the event of a potential wildfire.
Okay, members, any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to HB 2805 relating to health.
Chairs, members of the committee, in addition to the Article 10, Section 6 concern, we actually do have a subject title concern. The bill is related to health, and we just want to ensure that the study required by this bill is contained to health issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Health. Thank you. American Lung Association of Hawaii.
Allah, Chair, and Vice Chairs, committee members, I'm Pedro O'Hara, Executive Director of the American Lung Association. We stand in full support of this bill and what it's trying to do for the people of Maui. One of the things that I want to point out in my testimony is that these are part of the lessons learned after the 9/11 catastrophe. Unfortunately, we didn't act until many, many years later on the information that was gathered many years after the 9/11 catastrophe. To this day, we believe that there's more people that have died outside of the towers inhaling the fumes from the 9/11 attack than died within the towers. So as we're concerned about lung health, obviously, this study is of incredible importance to not only the people of Hawaii, but also for other wildfires that can use a model to be able to track disease across time. I believe that Chair Biladi, who originally authored the bill, was going to suggest an amendment to also add a monitoring system, a long-term monitoring system for this bill along with the study. I'm not sure if she had the opportunity to be able to do that, if not yet in later time, but if she did, talk to the chairs about a possible amendment, we're in full support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna try and get through this whole thing without crying. My feelings keep falling out because I have not taken the time to actually process my feelings about what has happened. Allah, my name is Kisa Lu, and I'm here to testify in strong support of HB 2805. I am a resident of a country Maui. I responded to Lahaina, and I am on the Community Advisory Board for Maui West. I do want to say that residents of the burn zone are not the only people suffering the physiological effects of the fires. For weeks, sorry, I told you I didn't process my feelings. I'm so embarrassed, sorry, guys. I live just below where the fires burned a country, so for weeks, smoke filled the air and settled at our house. It settled at ground level at night, so that means for weeks, the smoke crept into our home where my family slept, where my six-year-old slept. So as a parent, I need to know that he is safe. I volunteered in Lahaina the day after the fires and for weeks after. I worked alongside friends and family, people I see as family, especially now. I saw some people every day giving their all for 10, 12, 24 hours a day with whatever PPE they found or decided to wear or what was available. Our eyes itched, our throats burned, our lungs got tight, we got dizzy. I need to know that we are safe. Like I said, I haven't taken the time to process much of what I saw or felt. The smell of smoke still triggers me. It makes me anxious. I'm really good at being able to smell if the smoke is old or new or wet. Images of my son with the hose, trying to keep our house wet just in case we needed to run. The boxes we put in our cars just in case we needed to run. My grandparents in their car, which I put them in hours before just in case we needed to run, and my Papa fell. I didn't want to lose my Papa that way. I have all these feelings, even though my house didn't burn, even though my family I am imploring all of you to support this bill. Help us expand to everyone on Maui, including the first responders, including our children. Lastly, please understand that this study isn't just for us on Maui. It benefits all of us. All of our islands are at risk of wildfires. We will have another hot, dry summer. We will have strong winds again, and we need to be prepared. Mahalo for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We have next Alika Mauna Kea on Zoom.
Allah, my God, Paul, it's really powerful testimony. Mahalo, Kisa. I stand by my written testimony, but would like to add to it here. I'm Alika Mauna Kea, born and raised in Waianae, and Professor of Epigenetics at the University of Hawaii, where my research team focuses on understanding how the environment affects our genes at the level, and how this relates to diseases of health disparities that are so pervasive in this, especially among the Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders, in order to improve public health and enable prevention. As co-director of the Maui wildfire exposure study, I obviously strongly support HB 285 relating to health, not only as it will provide crucial funding that will meet an urgent and currently unmet community need, but as it represents a genuine extension of invitation for the state to join in our ongoing efforts in a public-private grassroots partnership to strategically support each other in helping our Maui community recover by monitoring environmental exposures and health among those that have been affected by the wildfires. I welcome members of the committee here today and the diverse communities you represent to join us in a unique initiative that has never been done in our lifetime by supporting this bill. The experience we undertake here and the lessons we will learn from this study will lay the foundation for disaster recovery now and into the future so that we can better equip our equip our communities with the tools, resources, and knowledge to shorten the long road to recovery while mitigating adverse impacts on the health and well-being of our people, not just on Maui, but throughout our Kai Aino. Finally, I offer this ololono eel for all those in service of our community.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone else wishing to testify?
I'm here representing Dr. Denise Conan, the Dean of the College of Social Sciences, and representing the testimony of the University of Hawaii. We stand on our testimony. I'm also the Executive Director at Ujero, where one of the partners on this study, and I submitted private testimony, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Carl Bonham. Mahalo.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna promise I'm not gonna cry. This is very personal for me. I, my name is Nakima Glatt. I am a mother of a student who attends Lahaina Luna High School right above the burn zone. I'm also a nurse practitioner who lives and works in Lahaina. I've been serving the medical needs of our community in Lahaina since the day of the fires. I'm the Medical Director of the Maui Medic Healers Hui, and I'm co-investigator on the Maui West Study with Dr. Warris and Dr. Monakea. Since the fires, I have treated newborns, I've attended births, I've treated children, teens, military, first responders, and the elderly who were confined to their homes without service or the ability to call nine-one-one because we had no service. We couldn't call nine-one-one. We were going door to door to see our community, to help each other. I've even treated myself. I've treated myself for respiratory complications due to this exposure, and I'm still treating myself. I have ongoing complications myself from being exposed to the fire. I witnessed the physical and emotional traumas that our community has endured and they're still facing every single day. Our community deserves this. We need to expand this study. This study will ensure healthier outcomes and prevent further complications related to the wildfire exposures. The study also has the potential to save lives on a global scale, not just here, by providing public health education associated with future and the inevitable wildfire disasters, such as the ones that we all survived on Maui. We need to expand this study to include children, first responders, and documented everybody. We don't need a small suitcase full of spam two weeks after. We need financial support, we need community collaboration, and no one should be left behind or forgotten. We need financial support, we need help. Our communities have suffered enough trauma over the last few months, and we owe this to our community. Maui deserves better. Our people deserve better, and this study gives us hope. It gives me hope. So supporting this bill and this study will ensure that our residents are safe, healthy, and get the long-term follow-up care that they need as well, because you know that they're gonna need this long-term follow-up care. Most importantly, this study is gonna give us hope. It's gonna give hope that a better future is coming for Maui. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, members, any questions?
Thank you, Chair. For Dr. Monakea, please. I know last time, I think it was last week at our health info briefing, the, the goal number that was mentioned for this study was about two thousand. Is that still the same, and how many people have already signed up for this study currently?
Yes, that remains the goal. We have a capacity currently, thanks to the Hawaii Community Foundation, to support a thousand adult participants enrolled in the study. We currently have ten percent of that enrolled from our first event last weekend. We're going back again tomorrow and this weekend to hopefully increase that support more than double for enrollment. But the extension here would be an additional thousand participants, affected community members, that will include first responders, volunteers that were part of the cleanup, as well as children.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Additional questions, members?
My question is also for Dr. Monakea. So, thank you for spearheading this effort and really speaking to the community's needs. And I'm wondering, you know, you heard the testimony that we all heard, and I'm wondering if you have the capacity to do a study that expands out at least to sample island-wide? And, and if, if you, if you have the capacity organizationally, then what it looks like in terms of additional resources that you would need?
Mahalo for that question. Indeed, we are, we're supporting that. We have actually started on the ground on Oahu to provide that capacity since it's easier for us logistically. We are here, I'm grounded in Oahu, and my lab and our facilities are located here, so we can accommodate those that may be affected and might have left Maui. But we would like to extend it first to those that remain there, that like to remain there for the duration so we can follow up on those participants, to look at the long-term impacts. So there's two things. We do have support and logistical capacity to do that. Given additional funding, that would be able to expand the study to beyond just the two
Could you give us, and maybe not now, maybe you could reach out to the committee, to the Chair, and provide additional, like, pretty concrete, specific detail about the nature and the scope of the resources you would need?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. In fact, we submitted a budget for the expansion of the one thousand participants on Maui, and that would be a similar budget we could expect for an expansion to other islands and other communities as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monakea. That information about the budgetary needs or appropriation requests would be really helpful. Oh, he went off the camera. Dr. Monakea?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah. Mahalo.
Okay. Just wanted to say, if you could please send that budget information, that would be really helpful, so that when we send this to the money committees, they can evaluate the appropriation request. I wanted to follow up, you know, there was a, a question, I think, raised by the American Lung Association about making this study long-term. Can you describe how long this study will last?
I don't know if that question was directed to Pedro, but for, for, for us, we expected the study to continue for at least five years. With thanks to HCF funding, we can do the baseline assessment for one year. We're seeking additional support by other agencies to, to extend that to five years. But we also, of course, we don't expect some, some of the initial impacts to have, to, to express or manifest within a five-year period. Actually, we think that a lot of that could manifest much, much later. And so we're also hoping to extend support for the study throughout at least a fifteen-year duration, so we can understand how these initial events might have affected individuals in the long term. And that's similar, I believe, to the, to the timeline that Pedro mentioned earlier in his testimony for the other disaster.
And then there was a request to have some kind of health registry as a component of this study. Is that a part of the study, or would that be something separate and additional?
If that's directed to me, yeah, it's a separate initiative and would require additional support. This, this HB two oh five, I think, represents just the effort of the study itself, recruitment of participants, understanding the health and well-being impacts of the wildfires of those participants, and following them longer term, and expanding it, of course, to include first responders, volunteers, as well as children into the study. A registry would be helpful and complement the study, although it's a very separate process, and it involves a, a different coordinated effort and, as well as support.
And is there, is it a health registry? Is that the right term? Is it a community registry? What's the right technical term for that?
It's a registry of members that were impacted by the wildfires, so that we can learn where they are and how we can best deploy resources around assisting them for the future, not just now, but as, and follow them up as, as the, as we engage in recovery. So that registry is meant broad and capture as many folks as we can that want to participate in that registry, so that we have a way to contact them and, and, and be better prepared and support them with, for, with whatever needs that, you know, evolve during the course of recovery.
Forgive me, I think it's my lack of technical knowledge in this area. I'm, I just want to make sure we're using the right term, so just broadly, registry is the right term?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Wildfire-affected, you know, registry, that would, would be really important to understand the health implications and the, the short and long term. So that would be a separate initiative.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Monakea. I think that's good, that clarified. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Monakea, are, are there, or are you positioned, or any of your colleagues positioned, to apply for federal funding to support this study? Because I see it as being important nationally and globally, and for, you know, just our general knowledge and understanding, as some of the testifiers were suggesting. So have, if, if you are already thinking about that, in which direction, like, who, which organizations or which grants or funds would you consider trying to pull down?
Thank you for that question. We actually are positioned to seek federal funding, and we have, in fact, worked with partners at the National Institutes of Health, in particular, that fund health-related research, and, and in, in some cases, such as this disaster, fund time-sensitive grants, so that we can understand better the impacts of those events on human health. So we have applied, and actually, the grant has been reviewed, and it's in council at the moment. This is the fastest that federal agencies can work, especially NIH, so we're moving as fast as we can in order to secure additional funding. But this goes, this, the, the ask here goes beyond just the federal funding to expand the study to include first responders and children, which the federal funding also would be limited.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to HB twenty-two forty-eight, DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chairs, committee members. Michael Kane with the Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. On behalf of DLNR, we stand in support of this measure. And if I can add, our office has a strong working relationship with both the North Shore Coastal Resiliency Group and Sea Grant College, or the Sea Grant College Program. So we anticipate dedicating staff to help this project move forward if the bill passes. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Same concern, the Article ten, Section six.
Thank you. Denise Antolini.
Aloha, my name is Denise Antolini. I'm a North Shore resident, and thank you for the opportunity to testify and aloha to the Chairs, Ichiyama, Peruso, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee, which include our Representative Quinlan, who introduced this measure on behalf of many voices in the community. So thank you for this. Three points. One, I took this Zoom photo, so I paid attention to the rules. So this Zoom photo that I want to show you is just taken about ten days ago. This is the lifeguard tower at Sunset Beach. It is absolutely hammered, which happened a couple of years ago. This whole stretch is subject to very volatile episodic erosion, and several of you on the committee, both Chairs and others, know this area very, very well. So the need is urgent in terms of erosion in the area and the threats to not just private resources, but to public resources. That tower is teetering on the edge. So that's my first point. The need is really urgent. Second point is, this study is not just a study, it's an action plan that provides some pathways forward for solutions. And Sea Grant in collaboration with a climate resilience collaborative, private consultants who know the area, and with the community, I think, are the best stakeholders to come together to move this forward and create some options. My last point is, you probably have gathered from the testimony, you have, let me just say strange bedfellows on this bill, but in a good way. These are individuals like myself, community members, organizations, institutions that are otherwise, actually, we're fighting with each other over enforcement actions and, and all kinds of other things. But on this bill, there's a consensus. And so I think with this positive opportunity to work with Sea Grant and others moving forward, the legislature has a green light from this very diverse group of stakeholders, and we, and we hope that you take the opportunity to support us. Lastly, on the AG's point, we completely agree. It's a matter of statewide concern, so please amend that appropriately, so it is constitutional, and help us move the bill forward. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up is Charlie John Chardoff.
Aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. I'm a, maybe a little bit of a different perspective. I'm a relatively new resident on Kanui Road, right near Cami Lands, the world-famous surf spot on the Sunset Beach. And I speak in strong support of HB two-two four-eight, and I think this is a great start in addressing the issue that we see in our community with erosion. It's very obvious, specifically on that stretch of beach there. So I thank you for your time, and again, I'm in strong support of this measure.
Thank you. Next is Kenneth Martin. Okay, not present.
Good afternoon, Chairs. Thank you for the opportunity to come. My name is Randy Moore. Actually, Denise stole most of my testimony. I live about one river width and six houses from the lifeguard stand that you saw. I sold about the property fifty-five years ago. I've been there a long time. But it's really, this particular thing is not about the property owners, it's about the public amenity that is this beach, and really, all of our beaches are public amenities. We, we tend to think of it sometimes, oh, as a beachfront property owner, they saved their property. But this is, I think, about, about a public amenity that needs to be preserved. I was a member of that resilience group that the DLNR referred to and is actually referred to in your bill as well. And echoing Denise's testimony, this bill is for a plan, not a study, so please don't turn this into a reso saying, let's study this some more, because we need to do something. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Chip Fletcher, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chairs, members of the committee. My name is Dolan Eversole, representing University of Hawaii. We'll stand on our written testimony in support, but I did want to also add a clarification in our testimony about broadening the scope of this effort and this measure, so that it's not just a beach management plan, but instead, as we've seen reflected in testimony today, a climate adaptation plan, so that we can implement some measures. implement some measures in the future. I will make myself available for questions as needed.
Thank you. That's all signed up to testify. Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Questions?
Chair. For University of Hawaii? Sorry to bring you back up again.
No problem.
I'm looking through your testimony. I don't see an amendment.
We it just in our testimony, we had suggested broadening the language to include the mention of climate adaptation as an objective and goal of the measure. Not a specific amendment, but an overarching idea.
Oh, so you're not saying we need to change the language of the bill?
Perhaps consider adding the terms climate adaptation as one of the objectives of the measure itself. We didn't add that as a specific amendment, however.
Do we need to change the language of the bill?
I would I would say that would be a great suggestion. I'm happy to work with you in the committee on that language as needed.
To include, what is the phrase?
To include the terms climate adaptation plan as an objective of the measure.
Climate adaptation.
That's right.
Okay.
Currently, it just reads to define it as a beach management plan, which is much more limited in scope.
Okay, got it. Okay. There's also two different due dates for the report in the bill as currently drafted. One is December 31, 2025, or 20 days before the 2026 session. We'd like to ask, can the report be any time sooner?
I guess that's possible. It would depend on the scope and what we what the final scope of that effort is. If it's a climate adaptation plan, we're probably going to need as much time as possible to engage the community and develop adaptation pathways and more of a land use oriented plan. If it's more restricted to just beach management planning, perhaps it could be the sooner of the two. But don't hold me to that date at this point. It's it's possible, yes.
Okay, let's assume that it's the broader version. Then which deadline would you prefer?
I think the later deadline would be more appropriate.
December 31, 2025, or the 20 days before the 2026 session?
I would have to look at a calendar to figure that one out. Whichever is the later of the two.
Whichever is the later.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Questions, members? Okay, seeing no additional questions, we will recess for decision making.
Okay, we are reconvening our Joint Water and Land, Higher Education, and Technology Hearing on Wednesday, January 31. This is our 2:00 PM agenda. Thank you very much, members. Appreciate you being here. So first bill on the agenda is House Bill 1844 relating to the University of Hawaii. Recommendation for the Waterland Committee is to pass out with amendments as a House Draft One, defect the date to the year 3000, and we're going to insert the dollar amounts into the committee report. Waterland Committee members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Vice Chair.
Voting on House Bill 1844 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen. Representative Ganaden. Excused. Representative Hashem. Representative Mizuno. Representative Morikawa. Representative Takayama, excused. Representative Souza, also excused. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Committee on Higher Education and Technology, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1844. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative LaChica. Representative Martin. Representative Martinez. Representative Matyoshi. Representative Mizuno. Representative Quinlan. Representative Todd. Excused. Representative Woodson. Excused. Representative Garcia. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Okay, next, moving on to House Bill 1924 relating to wildfire forecast system for Hawaii. Recommendation for the Waterland Committee is to pass out a House Draft One, defecting the date to the year 3000, putting in the recommended amendment from the Department of the Attorney General. And we're going to put the amount of $1 million into the committee report. Waterland members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Okay, voting on HB 1924 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Reps. 1924. Noting the excused absence of Reps Ganaden, Takayama, and Souza. Are there any no's or reservations?
Okay.
Recommendation is adopted. Thank you, members.
Higher Education and Technology, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1924. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Reps Todd and Woodson. Are there any reservations or no's? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, next, House Bill 1949 relating to the generation of wildfire susceptibility maps for Hawaii. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft One, defecting the date to the year 3000, taking the Attorney General's proposed amendments, as well as putting the amount of $1 million into the committee report. Waterland members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Voting on HB 1949 with amendments, noting Reps Ganaden, Takayama, and Souza as excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Higher Education and Technology, same recommendation.
Voting on HB 1949. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Todd and Woodson. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Okay, next, House Bill 2805 relating to health. The recommendation is to pass out a House Draft One, and we are going to defect the date to the year 3000. We're going to take the two proposed amendments from the Attorney General, technical non-substantive amendments. We're also going to add in a health, add in a registry. Yeah, make sure that it's a registry and a multi-ethnic cohort study. Okay, and that's it. Waterland Committee members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair, House Draft One.
Okay, voting on HB 2805, recognizing the presence of Reps Ganaden, Souza, and Takayama. So we're all here. Okay, any no's or reservations? Okay, measure is adopted. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members.
Higher Education and Technology, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 2805. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Todd and Woodson. Are there any reservations or no's? Seeing none, your your recommendation is adopted. Okay, last bill on the joint agenda, House Bill 2248 relating to beach management on the north shore of Oahu. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft One, defecting the date to the year 3000, taking the Attorney General's amendments. We're also going to blank out the dollar amount, put in the committee report. We are going to put in a due date for the report of December 1, 2025. So you each got to hustle. Okay. And we're also going to add in that this be a climate adaptation plan. So we're broadening the scope. Okay, Waterland members, any questions? Discussion? Vice Chair for the vote, House Draft One.
Voting on HB 2248 with amendments. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, members.
Higher Education and Technology, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 2248. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Todd and Woodson. Are there any reservations or no's? Awesome. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. The joint hearing is adjourned.
Convening the Higher Education and Technology Hearing for Wednesday, January 31, 2024, at 2:10 PM in Room 309. Vice Chair, sorry, my name is Representative Amy Peruso, currently serving as Chair, joined by my Vice Chair, Janae Capella, Representative Janae Capella, and Representative Diamond Garcia. And Representative May Mizuno. Vice Chair, if you could share some guidance, please.
I think all of you know this, but if this is your first time testifying, just to reiterate, please be respectful in your testimonies. And if you're joining us via Zoom land, make sure that you have your cameras off till it's your time to testify. And if you have any logos or things that might be copyright, please make sure that those are not in your background. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. So we're going to begin today's hearing with HB 1826, which would expand the Mental Health Technician Certificate of Competence at One More Community College through the hiring of an MHT certificate faculty instructor and a faculty outreach position. First to testify on our list, we have Artis Eschenberg from University of Hawaii, in support, in person.
Aloha, my Chair Peruso and Vice Chair Capella. Thank you. We stand on our testimony as was submitted, and we also wanted to underscore the importance of potential for scholarships for this as well. That's allowed us to, so far, using this year Good Jobs Hawaii funding and last year, I believe it was Oahu Back to Work funding. We've been able to fund every student, which has allowed us to graduate 46 students in two years, which is kind of unprecedented. So mahalo.
Thank you so much for your efforts. That's the only person we have signed up for testimony. Members, are there any questions? I have one question for the University of Hawaii, and and that is, was this measure also introduced last session? And if so, was it one of the measures that made it to conference committee?
Yes, it made it all the way to, I believe they call cattle call.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, we're going to move on to HB 2176. And let's just. I want to make sure that I have some clarity around the measures that we're hearing. So this one would establish the Office of Artificial Intelligence Safety and Regulation within the DCCA to regulate the development, deployment, and use of artificial intelligence technologies in the state. So first to testify, we have Nadine Ando from DCCA in opposition, in person.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Nadine Ando. I'm the Director of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We're submitting on our written testimony and here to answer any questions. But just to be clear, our opposition of this is with regard to the placement of this office within the DCCA, as we believe we're probably not the appropriate department to house this office.
Thank you. Next, we have the Deputy Attorney General with comments on Zoom. In person. So much nicer in person. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Chair Peruso, Vice Chair Capella, members of the committee. Christopher Leong, Deputy Attorney General, testifying for the department with comments. And a couple notes I just want to add. The first note is, I'm actually standing in for the person who wrote this testimony. So if there are any questions, I'll do my best. The second note is, I understand we got this in a little late, so I just want to apologize to the committee for that. You have our written testimony. We we just offered very specific suggestions, some additions, deletions, and wording changes to just help clarify the bill a little better. Like I said, I won't go through all of those because the specific wording is in our written. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you for taking the time to make those revisions. Next to testify, we have Pierce Young with comments in person.
Good afternoon, Chair Peruso, honorable members of the committee. My name is Pierce Young. I'm a technology professional with experience in machine learning and data aggregation. I want to stand on my comments as written, but would also like to just commend the committee for wanting to set up an office of this kind. I think this kind of forward thinking is exactly the kind of thing which will help keep our state as a part of a critical conversation that's happening around the country, whether it's housed in either of the departments that are being suggested by the has to look at. It's going to affect companies that want to be in Hawaii or not. It's going to affect our need to have super-good internet access back and forth to where the data centers are, where the AI is actually processed. So there's a lot of issues that we need to be ready for. So a working group would be ideal, and I think that's, I think the state, we've been looking at, Rebecca Kai, who's the Chief Data Officer, she was here with me, and she has responsibilities for AI, and we're looking at an executive order from the governor here that would help us create a working group and focus more attention on AI.
Ms. Sai, may I ask you to come up? Although you did not submit testimony, he invoked you, so.
Thank you, Doc.
So it's my understanding that you lead the Data Task Force, which is really focused on state institutions and creating more connectivity and alignment, and also oversight. So do you think that the work that you're doing with the Data Task Force can shed some light, potentially? I know that you're working on an acceptable use policy with respect to AI, and maybe we need a broader acceptable use policy that can be shared throughout the state with multiple organizations and, you know, private entities for their adoption. Is this something that, do you feel like in your task force, you might be generating work that could contribute to perhaps the work of a separate working group? So I see your work as being focused on state institutions, right? And I think this bill is really directed at this problem writ large. It spans the public-private divide, but I think that the work that you're doing now could also contribute to this broader work. What do you think?
Yeah, I think the current data working group, task force, we can definitely address the, for the state agencies, on the AI acceptable use case, AI governance, because you can't talk about AI governance without talking about the data governance. The data quality that feed into the AI model really controls what the, how trustworthy the output is. And also the equity is there for data as well as for AI. So we can address the governance part, but like you said, ETS and our team, we are responsible for, you know, setting the policies, guidelines for the state agencies. We're not the agency for the general public.
Right. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, are there any additional questions, members? Seeing none, we're going to move on to HB 2634. Sorry, as I scroll through the testimony. Which relates to information technology. So the first to testify, actually, we don't have anybody testifying in person on this measure, so we have no one to ask questions of. So we're going to move on to HB 2683, which has to do with multilingualism and, wait, I want to see what this is. Oh, yeah. So the continuation of the Lab School Program, which is currently a Hawaiian medium program at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. So this would remove the sunset date of that particular program, and it's, yeah, and would allow it to continue its good work. So first to testify, we have Yuko Cross from the Executive Office on Early Learning, in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Yuko Ariko Cross, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. EOL is guided by the principles of diversity and multilingualism, recognizing that a strong Hawaii weaves families, home, language, and culture into our collective work on behalf of our children. This measure would ensure the continuation of a laboratory school program, which is currently a Hawaiian medium program at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. It is also in alignment with the recommendations put forth from our governing board, the Early Learning Board through the roadmap, including proposed legislation for implementation of Act 46. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next to testify, we have Caillou Kimura from University of Hawaii, in support, in person.
Aloha, Nui Oko, eka luna ho'omalu, ame ka'opeluna ho'omalu, amen alala, hano hano, oke yu komike, ho'ona'aua wa'enehana, aloha, Nui Oko. Yes, I'm Caillou Kimura. I'm standing here in my capacity as a University of Hawaii representative. I am the Director of the College of Hawaiian Language, as well as Inilua, and the university system has submitted its testimony in support of HB 2683. So I just wanted to briefly summarize, I'm going to add some na'o to that testimony that was submitted in writing. First of all, I want to say mahalo Nui Loa, and recognize the hard work and efforts of the state legislature that has supported Hawaiian language, Hawaiian medium education since its inception, over 40 years ago, since the movement began. And so I really want to recognize that. And so this bill seeks to ensure, through this sunset of July 2026, ensure the existing, the relevance of the existing statutes and provisions that have been put in place to protect and better support Hawaiian medium, Hawaiian immersion education moving forward. The bill is, yes, it's about University of Hawaii at Hilo and its College of Hawaiian Language, which administers and runs laboratory schools, but those schools are not only located in Hilo, they're located all the way from Ke'akahakouai through to Hilo Hawaii and everything, communities in between. So I went in to emphasize that. In partnership with longtime collaborator, the Ahapunaleo, who really was the nexus to this movement of Hawaiian language revitalization, for the past 40 years, members of the college, the college itself, and the Ahapunaleo have been working very hard to build assessments, standards, teacher pre-service and in-service training to ensure quality standards that apply specifically to Hawaiian medium education. So this bill, by no means, is about not having those measures in place, but it's ensuring that these are measures that are relevant to Hawaiian medium education, which are different needs and different demands from the English medium education pathway. So we just wanted to add that to the written testimony, and also I'm here and available for questions if you have any. Mahalo, Nui.
Thank you so much. Next to testify, we have Namaka, individual in support on Zoom. Not present. Members, are there any questions? I have a quick question for Professor Kimura. So I have been very impressed by the work around alternative assessments and that this exemption has provided the space for. And in many ways, I think that when we look at the standards and assessments being developed in this kind of microcosm, I would say that they offer some of our best hope for the entire state to move forward with authentic assessments. So I just, I wanted to first thank you for that work, but then to also ask you to be a little bit more specific about, so you said it's four charter schools, and then 13 preschools. But it's also my impression that your work influences the other charter schools as well, the ones that are either immersion schools or culturally based or cultural focused. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah. So we do have, we have four laboratory schools that sit under the college, as well as 13 punanaleo preschools that are a part of that laboratory school consortium. So those are the direct programs that the college has Pili No'ith, or relationship with. But in the work with those specific laboratory schools, which again are across the state, the work that's done there for those schools also can apply should other schools or communities feel it's relevant and helpful to their Hawaiian language efforts in their own communities. So there are many collaborations that happen outside of the direct relationship with the laboratory schools that sit under the college.
Thank you. Members, any additional questions? Thank you so much. We're going to now move on to HB 2777, which would create two positions to support 4H within Citar. And first to testify, we have Anya, Professor?
Anya will be just fine.
I'm so sorry. It does it to me every time, I just freeze.
It's your tank, yes. I feel the same. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and rest of the committee. My name is Anya Vietchorek, and I'm the interim dean for College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources, and University of Hawaii will stand in the strong support of this measure. And what I really wanted to add is that these two positions are extremely important for the community and youth in Kona and Lihue. We know that 4H engage the students within, with the community, with schools, different organizations, and families, and, you know, 4H exists forever, and we know that the students who are part of the 4H program have a much higher chance of attending university, going to college, and then coming back to the community and giving back to these communities. These two positions, we do not have these two, these permanent positions in the college. We think they're extremely important. So what we have done for the last couple years, we have used the soft funding to support two individuals who are in these positions now. But as I wanted to mention, you know, the funds are not permanent, and we really appreciate this measure being introduced, and we stand in support. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. And we don't have any other testifiers in person or on Zoom, so if you could actually just stay there. Members, are there any questions? I just have a quick question. So you said that you already have folks in place and using soft monies, and so have they indicated their willingness to come on full-time and in a permanent capacity?
So this is a very difficult question, right? So there definitely is a need for these two positions. When we have a permanent position on the G funds, we have to have, of course, full-on advertisements, so we cannot put the people in these positions.
But they can apply for those positions.
But they can definitely apply, and I think that while Citar and UH and the both communities would be really lucky if they do apply, because they're excellent, so.
And can I ask you a quick question? So as a former 4H, I don't think you're ever former, but as a 4H person.
Yes, that's right.
I am wondering if you have this capacity on all of the other islands except Hawaii and Hawaii Island?
Yes, so we have, I am almost 100% positive that we have a 4H agent on all the other islands except Molokai, but Molokai falls under Maui County. So by appropriating these two positions to Citar for Kona and for Lihue, it will make sure that each island has at least one agent, so.
Thank you. Members, any more questions? Rep Lichika.
Aloha. So I'm not too familiar with 4H, but what is the current leg programmatic, or in terms of operations? Do you partner with existing organizations, you know, across the state to be able to provide these types of programming for youth support? Like, what is the setup in?
That's an excellent question. So the way that 4H works is that you have an agent that works with community members who are later going, I don't know what's going on with this microphone, that later on, working with a community like a parent, who can actually become the mentor, not mentor, but part of a, they can establish their own 4H club. And so we do work with number of organizations, but also community members, and I think that community members are the ones who are so essential, because it's that connection to the community that the students come from. So having the community leader working with our agents and the all volunteers is, so all the community members are volunteers, and they are basically working together with one or two agents to develop the programs. So they can have ability to develop in the areas that the students are interested in, for example. So it does not have to be always ag, or it doesn't have to be whatever other areas are. We have students doing robotics, for example, and so on, so. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so you are also connected to schools in a way that's somewhat similar to FFA, correct?
Yes, so it's a similar, we have also, so we, for example, have a military, because we have such a high number of military members here in Hawaii, we have one agent on Oahu that specifically works with family, military families, and is located in, on the base. So it's not, 4H is not official school program, right? But it's connected to the schools.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are going to recess for decision-making.
Yes, so we have, I am almost 100% positive that we have a 4H agent on all the other islands except Molokai, but Molokai falls under Maui County. So by appropriating these two positions to CITAR for Kona and for Lihue, it will make, will make sure that each island has at least one agent, so.
Thank you. Members, any more questions? Rebecca Chica. Aloha.
Aloha.
So I'm not too familiar with 4H, but what is the current leg programmatic or in terms of operations? Do you partner with existing organizations, you know, across the state to be able to provide these types of programming for youth support? Like, what is the setup in?
That's an excellent question. So the way that 4H works is that you have an agent that works with community members who are later going, I don't know what's going on with this microphone, that they are later on working with a community like a parent who can actually become the mentor, not mentor, but part of a, they can establish their own 4H club. And so we do work with number of organizations, but also community members, and I think that community members are the ones who are so essential, because it's that connection to the community that the students come from. So having the community leader working with our agents and the all volunteers is, so all the community members are volunteers, and they are basically working together with one or two agents to develop the programs. So they can have ability to develop in the areas that the students are interested in, for example. So it does not have to be always ag, or it doesn't have to be whatever other areas are. We have students doing robotics, for example, and so on, so. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so you are also connected to schools in a way that's somewhat similar to FFA, correct?
Yes, so it's a similar, we have also, so we, for example, have a military, because we have such a high number of military members here in Hawaii, we have one agent on Oahu that specifically works with family, military families, and we're located in, on the base. So it's not, 4H is not official school program, right? But it's connected to the schools.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are going to recess for decision-making. So on these measures, I really appreciate the testimony provided, and it might seem like this agenda is really straightforward, but I think it's really substantive and important, and I'm grateful that folks showed up to offer their ana'au. So on HB 1826, my recommendation is to add language on page four, line three, for the establishment of a scholarship program and the granting of scholarships and any other necessary administrative costs. I want to defect the effective date, make tech amendments, and in the committee report, I'd like to note that we would need to allocate $212,000, $250,000 as a total annual cost, which would be broken down to two FTE personnel at $75,000 each, and then around $60,000 for scholarships, and $1,200 for inter-island travel to support the program growth. Vice Chair, are there any questions? I'm being corrected. Okay, specifically in, in the committee report, it's $60,150 for scholarships. So thank you for that clarification. Vice Chair for the vote. Are there any questions about the recommendation? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 1826, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative LaChica.
Aye.
Representative Martin.
Aye.
Representative Martinez.
Aye.
Representative Matayoshi. Excused. Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Quinlan. Excused. Representative Todd. Excused. Representative Woodson. Excused. Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. On HB 2176, this is a very ambitious bill, and what we're going to do with the blessing of the committee will be to create a two-year working group with the purpose of establishing a state structure to develop acceptable use policy for AI and guidelines for the public and private sectors around the use of AI as outlined in this bill, in conjunction with the process, working at the federal level with specified members from the public and private sectors to be appointed by the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate. And these members will include representatives from DCCA, ETS, DLNR, Department of Energy, UH, the Data Task Force, the healthcare industry, and the travel industry. The working group will be asked to provide an interim report in December 2024 and a final report by December 1st, 2025, with recommendations for action. So we're going to include appropriations that will be blanked out in the bill but noted in the committee report for the purposes of research, working group facilitation, and reports with recommendations for the amount of $100,000, and we're going to defect the effective date. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 2176, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the presence of Representative Matayoshi and the excused absences of Representatives Quinlan, Todd, and Woodson. Members, are there any reservations or noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. On HB 2634, on page four, line seven, we're going to delete the "to" that precedes facility for the sake of clarity, and we are going to defect the effective date. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 2634, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Quinlan, Todd, and Woodson. Are there any reservations or noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And on HB 2683, I think this is a really important measure. We're going to pass it out as is, and we're going to defect the effective date. Are there any questions?
That's in.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Yes, not as is. We're defecting the effective date. But hanging on to the content. Any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 2683, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Quinlan, Todd, and Woodson. Are there any reservations or noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And on the final bill, HB 2777, we're going to defect the effective date, blank out the amounts, but noting in the committee report that we are requesting $200,000 for this proposal with $100,000 for one FTE in Hawaii County and another $100,000 for an FTE in Kauai, on Kauai. Members, are there any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 2777, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absences of Representatives Quinlan, Todd, and Woodson. Are there any reservations or noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. We are adjourned.